And welcome to the Norwood Zoning Board Meeting of October 7th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by Norwood Community Meeting and also GoToMeeting. I would ask everyone to please silence all the electronic devices. The format for the hearings, any parties wishing to offer comments and testify in matters before the Board, please approach the podium and state your name and address to the record. The applicant or their representative will address the Board and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. Members of the Board may ask questions before, during, or after the applicant's presentation. All any questions and comments from the Board will open it up to the general public and ask again that they, anyone wishing to speak, approach the podium, state your name and address to the record. Any comments and questions for the applicant should go through the chair, and following that, the applicant will be given an opportunity to make a final statement and answer any concerns that might have been brought up. At that point, the Board can consider continuing the public hearing or move to close the public hearing. If the Board chooses to close the public hearing, the Board may proceed and deliberate and vote on the proposal. Okay, the first matter before us is 1286 Washington Street, case 25-19, Appeal of the Determination of the Building Commissioner Regarding zoning Bylaw, Section 3.4.1, and all pools shall be completely surrounded by fence or wall in Section 10.1.2 conformity. This was read into the record at the last meeting, and the applicant had asked for a continuance. We now have a request from the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. That has been received, and the letter was in everyone's packet. Is there any other information, Alex, that's been added since we received the packet?
There hasn't been. I do see that Garrison Doodlezak is on the Google Meet with us.
Okay.
I believe for this case. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Yes, your doodles. The representative, Mr., what is his name?
Garrison Doodlezak.
Garrison, are you there?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I apologize. I could focus on my, Mrs. Garrison Doodlezak, I'm calling, I apologize for the construction that I am saying. Yeah. I know that.
Yep, could you just speak up a little louder?
I think I'm having issues with.
Yeah, we're just trying to get the volume. Give us just one moment, please, sir.
I apologize.
Thank you. Just trying to get.
Hopefully now it's a little better.
Yeah, if you could just speak up a little louder, it's a little faint, but just go ahead, go forward, sir.
Yes, yes. Thank you. So I just wanted to phone in and make sure that I can, if there's any questions that might come up on the applicant, but at this time, I request to withdraw.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? This is a request to withdraw without prejudice.
I have no prejudice.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion that we allow the applicant to withdraw. It has been moved and seconded. Matt, on the application, on the request to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes.
Yes, sir, your application has been withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next matter before us is 558 Pleasant Street, case 25-18, Request for a Special Permit under Zoning Bylaw, Section 3.1.5 G3, to allow open lot storage of tools and equipment in the M-zone portion of the property. And this was heard on September 2nd and continued as the applicant here.
Good evening, Mr. Shin and members of the Sounding Board of Appeal. My name is David Hearn Jr. I'm an attorney with Kelman and Cabral at 30 Walpole Street. I am appearing this evening on behalf of the owner of the property, which is 558 Pleasant Street LLC, and with me over here is Josephine Kordahy, who is the manager of the LLC. The applicant filed a special permit as a, somebody, a company that was a tenant of my client at the property. And as I understand it, there was a citation issued by the building inspector addressed to both the tenant and the owner, the LLC that owns the property. That was dated June 23rd, having to do with violations of the zoning bylaws because of open lot storage within the general residential district and manufacturing district without appropriate special permit relief, and parking of large commercial vehicles within the general residential district. 558 Pleasant Street is a property at the corner of Pleasant and Dean Streets. It is, there is a large residential building there. There's also a small building, sometimes referred to as a garage, but it's actually like a little, can be used for an office. The property is located partly in the general residential district and partly in the manufacturing district, and I apologize if I'm repeating stuff that you dealt with or have been aware of with the prior hearing, but I just wanted to make that clear. And so, as I understand it, the tenant was parking some vehicles, commercial vehicles, within the general residential district and without, and also some materials and tools and so forth. And they should not have been parked within the general residential district, and even within the manufacturing district, I believe they would have required special permit before that could be done. So the building inspector cited the tenant and cited the owner. And what subsequently happened is what brings us to what's before you, which is my client understands from the tenant that the solution to this problem would be to apply for a special permit for uses that could be allowed by special permit within the manufacturing part of the property. There's no solution for anything within the general residential, and my client knows that. I don't know about the tenant, and I'm not speaking for the tenant. I don't believe the tenant's here, although the tenant is aware of this continuation and was reminded by my client by, I think, text messages over the last couple of days. So my client understood from the tenant, the solution is, after talking to the building commissioner, apply for a special permit to allow those uses within the manufacturing district, and the problem will be solved. So an application was made on or above July 23rd. The next available hearing date was September 2nd. I understand the hearing was open at that time, but we have, there was correspondence from the building inspector that was received by my client after the date of the previous hearing that refers to accrued fines after the notice of violation dated June 23rd, accrued fines of $56,400 addressed to Velasquez Brothers LLC and 558 Pleasant Street LLC. Again, I only represent 558 Pleasant Street LLC. The building inspector's letter of September 26th noted that the abatement of the violations was in fact achieved on or above September 25th. So the tenant was gone. My client was trying to persuade the tenant to go once she became aware of these violations. And one option, I suppose, would be to bring an eviction proceeding, but frankly, she was able to persuade him to leave much faster than if an eviction proceeding had been brought in the, in the court, particularly because the courts on evictions are taking, seem to be taking forever, and it could have been fought. So we're here, and I understand, the applicant has made a request to withdraw his application, which could only be filed with the consent of the.
Just a point of information.
Yep.
The applicant sent an email October 1st asking to withdraw, but yesterday, the applicant sent a email. I am telling you now that I am not withdrawing my application for the special permit, and the applicant's not here tonight, so you're not representing the applicant.
I'm not representing the applicant. The issue, the situation we find ourselves in, we, in some of these cases, there's a violation noted, the property owner or the offending tenant or whoever it is, is notified that the fines will run at $300 a day per violation, and each violation, in this case, there were two of them, of the zoning bylaw is considered a separate violation, so $600 a day until the matter is resolved. So the course that was taken was resolve this by getting a special permit. I wasn't here September 2nd, I was only retained a couple of days ago, and it was continued to now. In the interim, the situation has been resolved, the tenant is gone from the property, the equipment is gone, the tenant is gone, and, and that's it. But we're in a situation where I don't have an understanding, and I, it isn't clear, because in the past, when violations have been abated, have been resolved, remedied either by a special permit or simply getting rid of whatever the violation is, the fines have generally been abated. We don't know where it is. I tried to contact the building inspector, and his response to me was along the lines of, this is pending before the zoning board, and I don't think I should talk to you about it directly, this was yesterday, I think, and, you know, your, your dealings should be with the zoning board. And, and I know that he sent a memo to you folks, and I have a, he sent me a copy, he didn't send me a copy of that, but I like sent me a copy of that this morning, I became aware of it late, late yesterday afternoon. He refers to a prior matter involving the same property going back a couple of years At the time of that other matter, my client's father was running the show.
Dave, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you're not the applicant.
We're not.
Okay, the applicant's not here.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on the application, and we'll hear anyone else that might want to speak on it, but not gonna just have this continue, we're gonna make.
We're not asking to continue.
No, it's not gonna get continued.
No, I'm not asking for that.
But I'm not telling you, the applicant's not here.
I don't think he cares right now.
Yeah.
Maybe he thinks he's, he's off the hook, I don't know. But my concern is that I don't want my client to be hit with a fine. It's a pretty heavy penalty.
Right.
For parking vehicles on the wrong side of the line.
We can heal.
Without a permit.
Did you have something, Alex?
Yeah, I just wanna state procedurally, my understanding is that with the applicant not present, the Board isn't able to open the public hearing and would be voting on the information that has already come before.
Right.
The Board on the matter.
Well, the public hearing's open, and we'd have to close the public hearing and then take the vote, so we can hear, but I don't want, we, we all received the letter from the building inspector about the prior incident, okay? So I don't think we need to go through that, everyone here has that letter.
I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think the building inspector's presentation of that reflects all that was going on at the time, but it did, it was a case where it was abated.
Okay, I'll just please address, I don't, I'm not trying to be unsympathetic, but I don't want to hear about health problems and money problems.
No, but my client.
Address the issue of the tow company, and then we'll.
Right, so on the tow company case, the Ms. Kordahy had to take over because her father was ill, in fact, he died early in January while this was going on, and Mr. Pelletier was aware of that and sent a very sympathetic note on January 8th when she told him about that, and his comment was, the, looking for that particular one, but the, the point was, it appears that they, they were able by then to get rid of the tenant on the tow company case, and the penalties abated. That was the end of it. I think my concern here is that if you folks deny the special permit, and frankly, we're not looking for the special permit, we don't, we don't want to have these problems again, we don't want this type of tenant, we wish the property were all zoned residential, the entire parcel was zoned residential. This is a problem that is out there with us, and we've seen that a few other cases. But the question is, does the Board take a position? We don't know what the building inspector's concern is, other than with respect to the violations and the fines, his statement today that in both cases, the violations dragged on for months before final abatement, which benefited both the tenant and the property owner. I think the other case is gone, the tow company case, but if you apply that to this case, and he says, this is wrong, property owners should not profit from knowingly and willingly violating our bylaws. My client didn't willingly violate or knowingly violate the bylaws. This guy came as a tenant, he wanted to use that small building basically as an office or as a satellite office for his work. Next thing we find out, he brought all kinds of equipment and the parking stuff. Now, how do you get rid of somebody? You can bring an eviction proceeding, and that takes months and months. They succeeded between June 23rd, when the citation was issued by the building commissioner, and September 25th. The tenant started the special permit proceedings and was pursuing those up through the hearing on September 2nd. By September 25th, before the continued hearing could occur, the tenant is gone. So what happens to all these fines?
Well, I'll tell you what happens to all these fines, okay? We'll vote on it, and then they'll go back to the building inspector, and if he decides to find your client, then you can appeal it back to us. That's when, it's not before us tonight, because we don't know what it is. So the procedure would be, the building inspector will make determination that I'm gonna apply the fines or I'm not gonna apply the fines. If he applies the fines and you don't like that number, you can appeal that, his decision, to this Board, and then we can decide to enforce it, to override it, to cut it in half, whatever the case may be. But that's not before us tonight, so, so that's the procedure if that does happen, but we don't know if that's gonna happen or not. That would be upon the building inspector.
But if the special permit were granted, would that be considered as abating the violation and therefore the fines?
In my mind, it would, but I.
Then, even though we don't want to use it, we, we'd prefer to have the, to, for the portion of the property that's in the manufacturing zone, if we got that, we evade the violations.
Yeah, but the applicant's not even here, he was supposed to bring us a plan, you don't represent the applicant, so, anything else?
Well, all I can say is, I do think, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, because this is an interested party who's being cited for those violations, even though she had no control over them. So I do appreciate, and I don't agree that they, the, the fact that the applicant isn't here means that nobody can speak to the matter, so I appreciate you giving me that opportunity.
No, I'm gonna let, it's still open, and thank you, thank you.
We have an interest on that, so, we would, and I don't know whether you can vote in a way that effectively abates the violations.
We can't, we can't do that, because we don't know what it is. We can vote on this, up or down, and then if it's down, it's, it's gonna go down, right? He's not, the applicant's not even here, he was supposed to bring us a certified plot plan showing where the line was and where he was gonna store everything, he's not here. Your recourse would be if Gary just says, okay, it's done with, it's done with, if Gary decides to enforce the fines against your client, you know the procedure, you appeal it to us, and then we'll hear, we'll, we'll hear that, and, and understand, and we all know the history.
And I, and I will say, Mr. Chairman, in response to the memo that Mr. Pelletier provided to you folks, the email memo, you know, we would, we would disagree with the statements where he's suggesting that we're somehow benefiting on this because my client, whether she got the rent or not, is a lot, she's paying me on this, and frankly, I've suggested to her, if the building inspector is concerned that you're somehow profiting, she, she'd probably be willing to give him that, that rent in lieu of any other, but, but a $56,400 fine is a pretty big fine for this and.
Agree, and that's why there's a process to appeal it.
Well, okay, we thought that, you know, since this is a case pending that was supposed to resolve and abate those violations, that would be it, but if you don't feel you can do that tonight, I accept that, and, and we'll see what you do on the special permit, and then we'll have to go back to Mr. Pelletier if he'll speak with us. He wouldn't speak with us.
Well, I'm sure he will.
No.
When this matter's resolved.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll leave you on that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address the Board on this matter? Is there anyone at GoToMeeting? So the applicant's not here, and I think we all remember, we wanted him to come back with where that line is. He has sent an email withdrawing, and now he's back in. In regards to the fines, if we deny this, Mr. Pelletier can enforce the fines, and then if the applicant can, can appeal the fines, and then we can make a decision on the fines. But that's not, what's here before us tonight. What's here is before tonight, we can do three things, deny it, approve it without any plan, or continue it, and my recommendation with the Board would be to deny it.
And Mr. Chair, just a question, it sounds like the last option of continuing, the tenant is no longer on the property, is that correct?
Right, he's gone.
So the idea that we would continue and get more information from the applicant is probably correct, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Rachel?
I mean, I agree that looking at the fees as an independent issue, that wasn't part of the notice, I don't think, independent of the special permit, that was even noticed.
Correct.
I think we were really clear about what this Board needed in order to even consider the request.
Right.
It has not been provided since that hearing, and I consider the fees more as a contract issue between the parties and not something necessarily for the Board to resolve. I mean, leases typically have provisions regarding lawful use and liability with respect to charges, and so I think that would be an additional avenue for the property owner to pursue if the building commissioner were to enforce those fines, but I, I agree, I consider these related, but from a matter of the public hearing notice, distinct issues.
Right, and if the building inspector didn't enforce the fines, the applicant can appeal it to us, and then it would be an issue before us properly.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, you can't, I can't hear what Ms. Churchill said, because we've got the event in the background.
But she was just regarding to that there's, well, Rachel, if you want to come up.
Yeah, I, I do think that they're related issues, but not directly related to what was included in the public hearing notice, and from kind of an avenue of relief, I kind of consider the point of the fees to also be a matter of contract under the lease, and so perhaps your client has an additional avenue for relief under the contract of the lease.
Do you need to recover any expenses she has?
Yeah, under the lease contract. I just fundamentally, it's not a town issue, it's an issue between the owner and the tenant and how those fees are allocated under the contract. So I think, you know, we don't have what we requested in order to even make a determination on the request for the special permit, which is what's before the Board, so I don't think on that question, we can resolve it right now.
I appreciate that, I mean, but in terms of the lease contract, these are not the most sophisticated, we're not talking about some lease in some office building in Boston, we're talking about the lease of a piece of yard and a small building that's been used for storing stuff in office or whatever, and I don't think they were thinking of zoning violations or fees like that. The problem for my client is, the building inspector says, you've got fines of over $56,000 as of last week, and, and it was abated sometime just prior to the 25th, when, but he refers to that date, I think he probably confirmed it then. So she's kind of left up to ya, but I appreciate it, and as the chairman said, we'll deal with Mr. Pelletier and see what happens, and if we can't come to a satisfactory resolution, we appeal his decision to this Board, and you'll see us again, but if we can resolve it without having to come back here, that's fine too. I mean, I know that in the past, fines have been abated simply by getting whatever the relief is, that's why I'm here, because we're kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place of, we don't really need or want the special permit, but if the special permit gives us protection against the fines, then we're more interested in it. But your point, from your point of view, you're saying, well, hey, this, this guy was supposed to bring a plan, he's never done the plan, and, and I don't know where we're gonna see him again, I believe we don't want to, but that's the situation we're in.
Alex, did you have something?
I was just gonna say, I think the public hearing is closed.
No, it hasn't closed yet.
It has not.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you, David. Joanne, anything?
No, I agree, just looking at the matter of the special permit, we have the information we had from the last hearing, and it's unlikely to any more information this morning.
Yeah. Al?
I don't know.
Okay, okay. You're not voting on this, did you, but did you do the mother?
I did do, I haven't signed the document yet, but I did.
Joanne was here, so Joanne can vote on it if you want to.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So we'll entertain a motion to close the pub, there's no one else to speak on this, correct? Okay.
So moved.
There's been moved to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Al, Al in closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Joanne in closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Rachel in closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Matt in closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion from the Board? What is the Board's desires?
Motion to deny.
Motion has been made to deny. Is there a second on the motion to deny?
Second.
Seconded by Al. Any further comment on the motion to deny? Al on the motion to deny?
Yes.
Joanne on the motion to deny?
Yes.
Rachel on the motion to deny?
Yes.
Matt on the motion to deny?
Yes.
And the matter is denied, yeah, the request is denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next matter before us is 1223 Washington Street Comprehensive Permit Modification Request. I'll read the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town and Norwood will hold a public hearing on October 7th, 2025 at 7:00 PM on the request of Matthew McDonald with respect to the property located at 1223 Washington Street, Norwood MA 02062, in the General Business Zoning District. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a modification for the comprehensive permit, ZBA case number 24-06, issued under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23. The requested modification would change the term of the affordability restriction on two of the eight units in the building from a restriction in perpetuity to a 30-year restriction. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw and Mass. General Law shall be considered by the Board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the Board. Plans and file of the application in the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Before we begin, Alex, I have a question, this is a comprehensive 40B, so it's three votes, not four, correct?
Yeah, I think that is correct.
Correct, yeah, okay, so if this, this would require three votes, just for information for the Board.
I could give you the statutory reference if you want.
No, no, I, I looked it up earlier, but go ahead, you represent the applicant, Mr. Hearn?
I do. Again, David Hearn Jr. of Kelman and Cabral, 30 Walpole Street, on behalf of the owner, the holder of the permit. The permit was originally issued to MPG Realty Capital LLC, a related company, is presently the owner of that property, and will have to take steps with the state and with the town ultimately to transfer the names. But the issue here is that the comprehensive permit that was a decision that is dated April 8th, 2024, contains a provision that the restriction on affordability will be perpetual, and it's found in the findings rather than in the conditions, and it's condition number six, the, I'm sorry, finding number six, "The proposal will result in affordable rental housing opportunities that will remain affordable in perpetuity. All deed-restricted units shall be restricted in perpetuity." The question of perpetuity is something that my client thought about and is asking for modification on and requesting a 30-year restriction and not a one in perpetuity. The question of in perpetuity was not discussed when we were before the Board, was not part of the application, was not part of the, is not required under the statute, nor is it required under the regulations that govern comprehensive permits. The only reference in the regulations about length of restrictions is that a restriction relating to new construction shall have a minimum term of 30 years. And, and that's the situation, what we're looking for here, for 30 years, my. For thirty years, my client has no objection to collecting reduced rents on twenty-five percent of the units in this small eight-unit project. It's a lot of money if they give up, but it's, it was the deal they made. And, but they never agreed to perpetuity. This board did not consider perpetuity. The first time that term showed up was in the decision that was already on file with the town clerk. And so our view is, we didn't want to appeal the decision and take it to court, which would have been, you know, what you'd have to do. Would have delayed the project, delayed the transfer of the property and all that. But this board has the right to modify special permits, including comprehensive permits. And we're asking for that. The, if you, I, I know that you got a memo from Sarah Dixon on this. And she does refer to the, some of the projects that have been approved under comprehensive permits, including Upland Woods back in two thousand thirteen, Avalon Bay in seventeen, and the Print Lofts in two thousand fourteen. I want to point out, though, that all of those projects are significantly larger than this project, which is eight units. The Upland Woods is two-hundred-and-sixty-two units, Print Lofts is forty units, Avalon Bay is one-hundred-and-ninety-eight units. I think it stands for reason that the cost of constructing units is significantly more on a per-unit basis when you're talking about a small project such as this, when you compare it with those larger projects, Avalon Bay, Upland Woods, and even Print Lofts, which are better able to absorb the cost of construction and absorb the cost of reduced rents over a particular period. There's apparently one perpetuity, whether they saw it or not, or worried about it, I don't know. But in the case of a small development like this, it seems to me that, and it seems to my client, that if you want to encourage this type of development, which can fit into smaller lots, which is not going to have such impact on a neighborhood as a large apartment building might, or a large apartment complex might, if you want to encourage this type of housing, one of the things you can do is agree that this restriction will not go on forever and ever. And the thirty years is a reasonable term. Now, it is correct, as Ms. Dixon said, that the, uh, the, the regulatory agreement and deed riders that E O H L C, Executive Office of Housing and Living, Livable Communities, puts out, do include the word in perpetuity. But that's their sample. I talked to the person in charge of this in, in Boston for E O H L C and said, you know, we, we don't really want this to be perpetual. And her comment was, nothing requires it to be perpetual. We would like it to be perpetual, but we're open to considering it if it isn't. And of course, your ZB A is going to have something to say about the matter. So I've given you a memo, I, I hope you have it, dated October second. I hope you have that as part of your packet. If not, I have copies for those who don't, who didn't get it. And a few copies. You have it? Okay. I think, I think it was sent in in time to go up with your.
I have the waiver, which will move on.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Dave, we, we have the waiver, but we don't have, if you have a copy of what you're referring to.
Well, let me see. It was sent in to be included in your packets.
Alex, can you bring that up? And we'll be, we'll be voting on that waiver, Dave.
Uh, that's right. Yeah, the waiver is on the fees, yeah. But I, cataract surgery in one eye, not in the other, so I can't really wear my glasses. And it's still adjusting.
If you want to.
So I'm going to walk over and look at what she's looking at here, because I can't.
Do you want me to read it into the record if we don't have?
Yeah, if you can, if you want.
Yeah, it might be easier for me because you had that surgery.
Mercury Taylor. Mercury Taylor, I think he's my cousin. This is, this is a signed copy. I'm sorry, I thought you had that.
Yeah.
Normally bring them, but we sent it in there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Only makes it in.
That's fine.
Alex, we sent it into you the second in time to go.
All right, I'll read it into the, I'll read it into the record for the members, because we did not get it. This is dated October second from attorney Hearn, representing twelve twenty-three Washington Street LLC. The modification of the Comprehensive Permit Decision dated April eighth, twenty-twenty-four to change the relevant affordable housing restrictions from one, that is perpetual, to the one has a term of thirty years. The applicant submits the following. The Comprehensive Permit was granted by the Z, Norwood ZB A in favor of MPG Realty Capital LLC with respect to the property real estate known as twelve twenty-three Washington Street, Norwood. The applicant is the successor in interest with respect to the Comprehensive Permit, having acquired the premises as nominee of MPG by a deed dated May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, that's recorded in the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. The ownership and management the applicant did not change. The applicant is presently engaged in constructing the two-story, eight-unit residential apartment building that was authorized by the permit of the ZB A. Of the eight apartments being constructed in the building, two will be affor, will be affordable units as required by the permit. The decision granting the permit contained a statement in its finding section. The proposal will reside and result in affordable rental housing opportunities that will remain affordable in perpetuity. All deed restriction units shall be restricted in perpetuity. That was finding six, page three of the decision. The question of whether the affordable units in the building should be restricted in perpetuity was not discussed during the Comprehensive Permit Application process of the hearing before the ZB A. The applicant is requesting that the ZB A revise finding number six by deleting its existing language and substituting in its place the following. The proposal will result in affordable rental housing opportunities that will remain affordable for thirty years from the date of issuance of the permanent certificate of occupancy for the project. All deed restricted units shall be restricted for thirty years from the date of issuance of the permanent certificate of occupancy for the project. The applicant believes that the proposed thirty-year term for the affordable housing restriction is not inconsistent with other projects approved under comprehensive permits and based on discussions with representatives of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities is a permissible pervert for such restrictions that the E O H L C will consider for this type of project, should the ZB A concur. The regulations of the E O H L C relevant to comprehensive permits contain no requirement that affordable housing restrictions be in perpetuity, and that is seven sixty C M R fifty-six point zero. Rather, regulations refer to the term of such restrictions and the expiration of the same. The applicant acknowledges that proponents of affordable housing may prefer restrictions that are perpetual. However, neither regulations administered by the E O H L C nor the relevant provisions of Chapter forty B contain any requirement that the applicant, applicable affordable housing restrictions be perpetual in their effect. In the present case, the applicant is well underway with the construction of the eight-unit apartment building that was authorized by the permit. Upon the completion of the building, the immediate neighborhood will benefit from the addition of new housing in the South Norwood community, with twenty-five percent of the apartments being dedicated to affordable units. The town of Norwood will benefit from the added real estate tax revenue that will be realized from what was for many years, a vacant lot, and for the addition of the premises to its subsidized housing inventory. However, the applicant has found that the cost of construction, both those occurred to date and those anticipated in the completion of the building, are significantly higher than they were anticipated when the approval process began over three years ago. The fact that the uncertainty of the effect of an imposed perpetual affordable housing restriction on the value of the premises decades from now suggests that a limitation of the term for the affordable housing restriction to a term of thirty years would protect the financial viability of the project over the long term for the applicant. For, for which is part, agreed to construct affordable housing that benefits the entire Norwood community, while taking on the risk of construction and uncertain real estate and rental markets. In addition, it promotes the broader public interest by demonstrating the town's ability to facilitate affordable housing production in a flexible partnership-based manner. The applicant requests that the ZB A grant the request to modify the Comprehensive Permit. Signed, David Hearn, attorney for the applicant. Okay, so, and we'll make that part of the record.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I do, I want to point out, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the guidelines for Chapter forty B, Comprehensive Permit Project Subsidized Housing Inventory, issued under seven sixty C M R fifty-six point zero zero by what was then the D H C D, Department of Housing and Community Development. Now it's been renamed to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Those guidelines, which are, my client has, you know, is familiar with them. We've looked at as part of this whole process, uh, refer to use restrictions that must meet the following minimum standards. And we're talking about the use here. Runs with the land, the use as affordable housing. Runs with the land and recorded at the appropriate registry deeds or filed with the appropriate land court registry district for a term that shall not be less than fifteen years for rehabilitated housing units. We're not talking about that. And not less than thirty years for newly created units. That's what we're doing. So their own guideline, say, thirty years is permissible. That nothing requires it to be perpetual. Having them perpetual is something that some may consider desirable from a policy point of view and from the town's point of view. But frankly, my client is building these apartments, adding to the value, as we said in the memo, adding to value, taxable value, adding to the subsidized housing inventory for the town, and committing to do that and to accept reduced rents for two of the eight units for, in this case, we'd like to do for thirty years. It affects the value of the property. It affects the value for the next owner somewhere down the road. My client builds and holds, but someday maybe their kids will inherit it. And lenders will look at this, you know, whether this affects the value, if they're borrowing money against it. So they're willing to do more than their part. And, and keep in mind, these rents are not like Section Eight rents, where the landlord gets some from the tenant and the balance from the government. These are reduced rents that the owner collects and does not get subsidized by any government agency. This doesn't cost the town anything, doesn't cost the Commonwealth anything, yet it adds benefits to the town and the Commonwealth and increases affordable housing. But it seems fair and reasonable that after thirty years, they would not, they should not have to be bound by that and continue to incur that reduction. Who knows what things are going to be like thirty years from now? But others by then will probably have built affordable housing that would replace them. We've had this in the past where affordable housing restrictions have expired. I remember the selectman talking about it at times. Affordable housing restrictions expire. And we're able to report that, the towns, they were, well, we're picking up new ones. We've added other projects that have affordable housing. This is part of that. This is filling gaps. We are compliant with forty B, but it's a good idea to add more units. And my client's willing to do that and is doing it. They're already in good faith, they, they're well underway with construction to, uh, and they'll, no, no objection to absorbing it. It's part of the deal to absorb that hit for thirty years. But the idea of perpetuity never came up in the discussions or the hearings before this board or anywhere else. The only time they turned up, the first time they turned up, when a signed decision was filed with the town clerk, which would have required either a court appeal or the route we're taking now is just to say, would you modify the decision on that one point? Town still gets what it wanted, which was affordable housing. We've got a new building and everything else. So that's pretty much the presentation and happy to answer questions if there are any.
Yeah, before we open up to the public, are there any questions for Mr. Hearn?
Just a comment that, that the value of forty B is that you get to circumvent local zoning, right?
You do, you do.
So you didn't have to go through any of this process, which costs time and money, correct?
Well, but the value of this is that there would, nothing could be built on, nothing would be built on that site. You'd have a vacant lot there because.
Well, not necessarily, it would have, it would have been a negotiation with the town as to what they wanted to do.
This, this, we tried, this board.
So you tried, but, but, so that's my point, that's my point. So they were able to circumvent local zoning in order to do this. And they're actually moving forward with construction when no other developer is building anything right now. So it can't be that much of a hardship, in my mind, given that they were able to get a loan. They're actually.
Nobody said anything about a loan.
Oh, so they're, they're self-financed.
Well, you know.
So, so, so that, that's another point. And what, where, where are you at on AMI in terms of, in terms of what the affordables are going to pay?
I think this will be eighty percent AMI.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but, but the fact is, Mr. O'Neill, um, this property could not be developed except by a friendly forty B. And friendly forty Bs negotiate between the town and the respective developer.
Very familiar with them.
Yeah. And so we get a benefit, but so does the town get a benefit.
Yeah.
A commitment of affordable housing for an agreed term.
From all eight units, I, I understand.
They get to count all eight units and we're doing two.
I get, I get.
Yeah. We scaled this back from what the original proposal was. It would have been twelve units, that was the original proposal. We scaled it back even during the, when we were doing the variance proceeding. We didn't change anything when the variance, it was clear we weren't going to get the variance, so we withdrew. We didn't change anything when we came back on a forty B. Exact same project, made the adjustments to the building, the fire department wanted, all these other departments wanted. Did all that, and yes, we're getting value that we wouldn't get. But the town's getting taxable property with significant value, more housings being provided, affordable housings being provided. And a term that was not discussed or agreed to was put into the decision without any discussion.
But whose fault is that?
Not ours.
That.
Not, we didn't do it.
But you accepted it.
We didn't accept it. We're here now.
You didn't accept it.
We could have appealed it to the court, but we, the town and we would have been in litigation still on that. So to avoid that, the better approach is to come back to this board and ask this board, can you look at this and look at what this is? It isn't just the cost now of construction. And better to start now than start a year from now or six months from now. Could that cost the construction and the cost of later?
The expectation is the costs are going to, are going to go down because interest rates are going to come down. Tariffs may change, so I, I mean, I deal with developers all the time.
I understand that.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't agree with what you're saying.
Okay. My client's view is the cost is going up and it's costing more than they thought it was going to. So I don't want to debate that, but I'm saying.
The other members have questions.
Yeah, okay.
Rachel?
I'm sure you've watched the hearing far more than I have. And you note that the concept specifically of perpetuity was not expressly discussed as perpetuity during that hearing. But was there ever any discussion of a limited duration of the term? Or was it just, these are going to be deed restricted affordable units, period?
I don't recall any discussion of the term. That's why we want to have the discussion now.
I agree.
Because it was just, it appears in the decision. And the alternative at that point is you file an appeal under Section seventeen of Chapter forty-eight and go into court and tie everybody up for a long time arguing about it. When this board has the authority to review the matter and perhaps grant the request of modification, it seems to be the better approach. Somewhat less adversarial than suing somebody. And, and I, I know it's perpetual with other developments, whether it was discussed on those, Upland Woods, the others, I don't know. But they're also better able to absorb it than a small-time building with eight units that is going to have this forever and is giving up a greater, you know, it's much more expensive to build eight units on a per-unit cost than if you're willing a hundred units or two hundred, as some of those projects are. So they're absorbing that cost, they're willing to do that. But they think there should be an end date and that the town benefits tremendously from this project, from the affordability. But at some point, it becomes somebody else's, you know, they, they've done that bit. They will have done their bit over thirty years. The cost over thirty years is hundreds of thousands of dollars of lost rent, not, without even referring to the, what would probably be a diminution of value of the property because it is restricted. And the restriction goes forever. Lenders would look at it that way, prospective buyers down the road would look at it that way. We have no plans to sell. My client's business is owning properties and renting properties. They build to hold, they buy to hold.
And then I guess my follow-up is, the implication I'm drawing from, um, your presentation was that your client noticed this difference between their expectation and what was in the opinion when they reviewed the, um, the grant at the time that it was published and disseminated to your client when it was issued?
I mean, it came up, I mean, we've been talking about this for a while, about getting around to, to doing this. around to doing this with, but they, in good faith, went ahead with starting construction where they felt it was important to get started.
So they noticed, they noticed this discrepancy between what the opinion said and what their expectation was, and thereafter they commenced construction?
I don't know the exact date. He and I have been talking about this for some time, that, you know, can you think about how you, how we would change this and thought about it, talked about it and said, well, we'll request a modification of a special permit decision. So when that, in relation to the, you know, the site work began months ago, I don't know how long ago, he started almost as soon as he got the property, I think he fenced it off to protect it.
I'm looking at the decision dated April 4th, 2024.
Yeah.
You noted that it was issued to MPG Realty Capital, which you noted was a related party.
Right.
I just looked at the registry and it looks like that related party is now a lender with a mortgage on record.
Oh, there is, yeah, there is a mortgage on record. We didn't mortgage it to buy it, but we did put a mortgage on record for...
It's just, just looking exclusively at what was on the public records and the registry of deeds, it looks like the initial grantee of this permit, MPG Realty Capital LLC, who has since conveyed to the current property owner, and which you identified as a related party, put a mortgage on record about a month and a half ago in August.
That's right. I forgot about that. The, I drew the papers, but I didn't do any of the recorder, you know, we didn't form closing. It's a related company, and I want to say a parent company, but it's, this is sort of a subsidiary, the company that owns this. So within their family of companies, they lent money to 1223 Washington LLC to get the construction going, to fund, the construction was already ongoing, it was like, and he said, we probably ought to have a mortgage on record to secure this money we've been using out of a different company to do this. So we did that. And, but they haven't done an institutional, in response to your question, I'm sorry, we didn't do an institutional loan at this point. At some point, they might want to do that, but they were able to do it with their own funds to get it going. And when, whether they'll go and borrow the money from an institution and put the money back into their own accounts down the road after construction is completed, I don't know, but I wouldn't be surprised if they did that. But this was an easy way, they were able to do it, move things along internally. So you're correct. There is a mortgage, it's internal, within the family, within the family of companies. And, and this is, these are all family-run companies.
Yeah.
The Zoni and McDonald families are...
And it's, but all of it's in relation to the permit that was issued April 8th, 2024?
In relation to the construction authorized by the permit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, no other questions?
Rachel, I'm sorry, Shannon?
No, that was a similar question that I had, is that it's safe to assume that the applicant received the information that was drafted in the decision, either on that date or pretty close to that date. So it's been now a year and a half since the decision was drafted with the language around in perpetuity?
But the decision was final, except for appealing to court before we started. We didn't see a draft of the decision, we didn't see that language until after it had been filed and it required litigation.
And then the final decision was what, like a couple of weeks after?
It's stamped by the clerk on May 7th, 2024.
Okay, so it's still a year and a half ago, I guess, is what I'm asking you.
I don't understand why the, why the year and a half, if that's a concern?
Well, it's more just interesting that if this was a discrepancy that was a concern, that it was, that it took a year and a half and construction had started before it was something that was raised to the board, I think is more what I'm...
I don't think he wanted to say, we don't want to do the project. He wanted to say, we want to do this project. They're doing the project. But when they look at it and they look at the fact that we never agreed to perpetuity, we never discussed perpetuity with that board, the board didn't discuss it with us, and all of a sudden it appears, do we appeal to the court and spend all the money doing that and drag the town into that? And the town incur all those expenses of going to the land court or the superior court on a Section 17 zoning appeal? Or do we come back at some convenient time and say, you know what, folks, this is something that wasn't agreed to. It doesn't make sense from a policy point of view. It doesn't encourage people to do this type of project if they're going to get stuck with a, you know, a restriction in perpetuity for a smaller developer, for this type of project, which fits in nicely in a neighborhood and you can do others around town perhaps. But if you're going, you know, if others look at this and say, I'm not a big company, I can't do this, I'm not going to do it if it's in perpetuity. The Commonwealth doesn't require that it be in perpetuity. Nothing in our bylaw requires it to be in perpetuity. There's nothing in the bylaw that says in perpetuity with respect to affordable housing or anything like that. The guidelines don't say it, regulations don't say it, statute doesn't say it, and our bylaw doesn't say it.
Sure. Nor is it precluded. Nor is it precluded, though, in any of those things.
It's not precluded, but nor is a 30-year precluded.
Sure. Yep. Which means that it's at the discretion of the board.
It is at the discretion of the board, but had it been discussed and raised at the time, and I've gone through the memos, the staff memos that were submitted in relation to the comprehensive permit, no mention of term at all by the staff.
It just detracts a bit from the urgency of the situation, just given the amount of time that has passed.
I'm not saying it's, we're not saying it's urgent, but it's something we'd like to get resolved, and we were asking, my client has agreed to a, to a significant reduction in return on investment by agreeing to do 25% affordable. And that's fine. But as he thinks about it and thinks about the cost of that, if it's in perpetuity, is a heck of a lot more than if it's got a, if it has a defined term. And that's the cost to them on the return of their investment, which is a significant investment, the diminution in value because a building that has a perpetual restriction is worth less than another building. And sure, this wouldn't have been built without the friendly 40B, but that site was crying out for something to be done with it and about the only appropriate use for it. And the only thing that attracted anybody was my client trying to do the original approach, which was a regular non-40B, and the board couldn't do it. So that's where we are.
Okay, yep. Joanne, do you have anything? Al, do you have anything?
I have a couple of things.
Good.
One of which I probably won't be here in 30 years.
You mean attending, you mean attending zoning board meetings in 30 years?
Oh, I hope not. Unless I do it remotely. But all kidding aside, my experience from the planning board days and now board here, one of the things that we've struggled here in town with is affordable units. This was a battle for the two units, I understand that. My memory is, the discussion, the importance of it being in perpetuity was an important factor. In an original decision, we quote from step number four, about one one-bedroom and one two-bedroom, restricted as affordable to income-qualified households at no more than 80% of the area median income. But if you then jump down to line item six on the request, it says, "The proposal will result in affordable rental unit opportunities that will remain affordable in perpetuity," excuse me, "and all deed-restricted units shall be restricted in perpetuity," yeah.
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity. But it's here, it was signed off and accepted by the members of the board. The owner accepted these contingencies, if you will, and I don't mean to drag this out, but the problem is, we were struggling to get affordable units, to get 10% of units tomly. We'd worked, David, for years to get the numbers to where they were needed to be, to meet it. They came in straight 40Bs with Upland Woods being the final one that cut us over the hump, okay? And granted, this was a friendly 40B, and there were benefits derived from that friendly negotiation. So, so I'm not in favor of reducing to 30 years.
I may comment on that?
Yeah, please.
We have safe harbor. We don't have 10% affordable, I don't think.
You're correct.
Correct. We never had 10% affordable. We have safe harbor on the 1.5% rule. My client is adding eight units to the subsidized housing inventory with this, which helps our numbers. But we're not at 10%. We've never been at 10%. And this wasn't a struggle.
We're close, though. We're at about 9%. So we're at about 9%.
Fine, but not, but still, we've got a ways to go. But the town fortunately enjoys the safe harbor. The town didn't have to do a friendly 40B. That's what we have with the LIP program, the Local Initiative Program, that allows for friendly 40Bs. And we've done, this one was done that way. The proposal over by Mr. Franks, I think, is a friendly 40B. I can't remember if there have been others, but I think there have been some that are friendly 40Bs. But, you know, this wasn't a struggle to get these two units. My client readily agreed. The request that was made, I remember, was, would you make one of them handicapped as testable? And my client readily agreed to that. He readily agreed to making 25% of these units affordable. That, there wasn't any pulling of teeth. So I, and, but there was no, and by the way, I don't believe the board sees the decisions before they go up. The chairman sees the decisions and signs them at the office. We didn't see the decision until it was final. It had been signed and went to the clerk. So if, you know, he wanted us to appeal on that point, whether it was on the radar or not, we would have taken, had to take the town to court. And we don't want to do that. We didn't, look, this was not an adversarial proceeding, doing this project. This was a partnership, and that's what these projects are, partnerships with the town and a developer. And if you want more of these partnerships, we think that they would, they ought to be a little more user-friendly in terms of saying, do it for 30 years, that's fine. You've done your bit, and it encourages smaller developments. But to say, no, it's going to be in perpetuity, we didn't discuss it, it wasn't discussed at the hearing, it just turned up in a decision that was then filed and left us with no altern, two alternatives, drag the town into court or come here and ask for it, in a give and take, back and forth.
Thanks, Dave. I'm going to open it up to the public.
That's what it is. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here like to address the board on this matter? Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I would just like to...
Just if you could name an address for the record, please.
Cindy LaBaron, 11 Concord Ave.
Yeah.
I would like to just thank you for pointing out that it took them a whole year to notice that this is in their paperwork. He signed off on this, he battled with the neighborhood to get this property approved for this monstrosity, which is now opening up on Concord Ave, not on Washington Street, which is the address. So I'd like to thank you, and I would like to ask, what took a whole year?
Just, just...
What took a whole year?
Okay, thank you. We'll have that question asked.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just, I'll just ask if there's anyone else that speaks to this matter. Anyone else?
Anyone on GoToMeeting, Google Meet to this matter? Okay, Dave, stay ahead. I will, I just want to note, point of information, Mr. Hearn's correct, this perpetuity in 30 years, you got to be going on it, Al. We did not discuss it at our, at our hearing, at any of our hearings, so just, that is correct, because I did remember it and I did go back and review it. Good, there was a question on...
If we had, if it had been raised, either by us or by staff or by the board, there would have been a discussion. We would have known where we stood. And so now that's, we're trying to have that discussion. With respect to the comments we just heard, I would disagree that we mistreated the neighborhood or anything like that. We made changes to the property in response to the neighborhood concerns. At the time of the vote by this board, I don't recall any neighbors being present, or certainly no neighbors commented at that hearing that night when this board voted for the comprehensive permit. As far as the driveway being on Concord Ave, that is part of good design, that you put it there. The town wanted it there, I think the fire department wanted, everybody wanted it there in terms of how you design this rather than putting a driveway right near a side street. Have a driveway come out into Washington Street, that is a big traffic hazard. So just as other properties have driveways that come out into side streets, this was done as a good design thing. As far as taking a year to do this, or what went on, or whatever, it takes a while just to get a project underway, and I don't know that people appreciate that. You acquire a property and then you've got to get your plans finalized, get your building permits finalized from the town, get your contractors lined up and the subs and all that. So it does take time to build these properties. We listened to the neighbors, made adjustments, and by the time it came to a vote, there was no opposition being voiced by the neighbors. And there's certainly plenty of opportunity there. So I don't know what the concern is.
Okay, thank you. We did receive a letter, an opinion from the planning department. I think everyone received this. There is a request to waive the $3,000 filing fee with, that number, that number of $3,000 is based on a full review of a new request. So it's recommended by the planning department that we vote to approve the waiver request, which they find reasonable, and the fee that they recommend is just the regular special permit fee of $350. So if there's any discussion on that, it'll entertain a motion to waive the fee of $3,000 for the comprehensive permit fee and assign it a fee of $350 in accordance with our special permit policies.
So moved?
It's been moved by Shannon to waive the fee and assign a fee of $350. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Matt on the, any discussion? Matt on the motion?
Yes.
Shannon on the motion?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al, waiving the $3,000 fee and just assigning the commercial site plan fee of $350?
Staying.
Staying? Okay, yes. Al abstaining, so that's approved. So there's also a request, there's also a comment and a recommendation from the planning department. I will read part of it because I did read the applicant's letter, not all of it, but I'll read the comments. "The comprehensive permit requirement of affordability for the units in perpetuity is a requirement that is consistent with the model regulatory agreement and DRI is utilized by EOHLC and the LIP program, both of which are included in your packet. EOLC has confirmed the requirements of its regulatory guideline in terms of affordability in email dated 9/15/25, including your packets. These regulatory guidelines state the terms of affordability for a comprehensive permit project generally should be the longest period permitted by law, and the LIP program will approve a shorter term only upon finding that the longer term is infeasible or not in the public interest. The term of affordability in perpetuity is standard practice by both the town and Commonwealth and is supported by the right disclosure guidelines of Chapter 40B. Affordability in perpetuity supports the community's goals for increasing housing affordability as stated in NOA strategic planning, and more recently in preliminary drafts of the NOA 2035 comprehensive plan. Community engagement for the comp plan has so far shown a sign interest in increasing housing affordability and choice, so much so that has emerged as a core theme of the draft plan. Affordability in perpetuity has been consistently required by the ZBA and other comprehensive permits issued by the board, including Upland Woods, Upland Woods in 2013, and Avalon Bay in 2017, and also the site plan review for Printloss in 2014. As such, I strongly recommend that the board deny this modification request as I believe the current term is both feasible and within the public interest, and the applicant has not provided evidence to support it to the contrary. In the event that the additional evidence is submitted to hearing that the board finds compelling, I respectfully request that continues for the following meeting to allow council and staff sufficient time to review and provide comments to the board. With that being said, I'll comment on this. I don't think it's apples to apples to compare this to Upland Woods and Avalon Bay and Printloss. It's only eight units. And I see these costs every day. And when we read the word infeasible, I don't think the shorter term harms this. It's, we did start off with 16 units to 12 units, to eight units, and to David's point, the last meeting, and that was from all the neighbors that spoke to it, and from... and from David's point, at the last meeting, eight units was approved with two of them being affordable. And I disagree with the board on this recommendation only because I don't think it's apples to apples in comparing it to Avalon Woods, where you can absorb, when you have 200, 300 units, you can absorb this. With eight units, it's very hard to absorb. So that's just, I just wanted to comment on that. Okay.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
The director of community, director of community developments' comments really don't contradict what I'm saying. She refers to EOHLC confirming the requirements of its regulatory guidelines on terms of affordability. We don't disagree on affordability. The regulatory guidelines state that the term affordability should be the longest period permitted by law. Generally, should be the longest period, generally. And you make a point, it's not apples to apples. The, EOHLC has told us, ask the zoning board if they'll agree to a shorter term. There is nothing in the regulations that says it must be perpetual. So if anybody thinks it's required, it's not. They may think it's a great idea, but it's also a good idea to try to encourage small projects such as this. So, you know, we don't disagree with some of the statements here, but I think how some of them are cast is suggesting that this is a, and we know that the EOHLC and the LIP program would have to approve this if you voted for it. But, you know, this is, affordable housing is certainly an important concept that this town is looking at and should be working toward. This does that. This does encourage affordable housing, it encourages this type of project. Having said all that, if the board is inclined not to approve this, then I would ask for leave to withdraw without prejudice and leave it at that. We don't want to have a denial. My client has had a good relationship with the town. The family has had a good relationship with the town. We've worked with the town to bring this forward. And rather than have the bad mark on all of us of a denial, I think it'd be better if we withdraw it and look at the matter. Maybe we come back, maybe we don't come back, but I just, you know, a denial, I think, would be, maybe leave a sour taste in everybody's mouth at this point. So if the board is not inclined, and I've heard a couple of you suggest that you're not in favor of the request, then we would request a withdrawal without prejudice, as often is done when we can read the handwriting on the wall and the tea leaves and all those other things.
Okay.
Make sure there's not my client telling me to stop what I'm doing. No.
Okay, David, thank you. So we certainly can close the public hearing, and then we can have a discussion among the board, and we can entertain a motion to approve. We only need three votes, a deny or to allow withdrawal without prejudice.
I was just about to say, if we close the public hearing, is the applicant able to listen to the discussion and then reapproach the board?
No, no.
If they want to withdraw?
Yeah, if you want to have that discussion now, we can have that discussion now and then.
So it would be up to us to then hear what we just heard and make the decision for the applicant, then? Which could be challenging, I think, to.
The applicant is able to request a withdrawal after the public hearing is closed. They just can't provide any testimony.
That's the thing, if you want us to respond, yeah, I think we can.
I just wanted to make sure there was the opportunity.
That's been the practice of this board and the other boards, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so, that's where I'm at. I deal with this all the time, and so eight units to two units perpetuity, it'll have a problem with the financing, and you just can't compare this stuff with Upland Woods and to Avalon. There's just no way to absorb those costs. So that's where I'm at. So I'll start with, now, if you have any comments. We'll just go right around if there's any comments, and then we can decide to close it and.
I think in perpetuity is fine. I think it, you know, that was what they agreed to, that was what the documents say. I think the town needs in perpetuity. I think there are people that need in perpetuity. And I'm adamantly against changing it.
Shannon, any comments?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think it's certainly reasonable to ask for the 30 years, and I think we have the discretion to remain in perpetuity. I think that what is causing me to, if I were to vote on this, I would, I would deny it because of the fact that specifically to approve the shorter term, which would be the 30-year term, it says only upon finding that the longer term is infeasible or not in the public interest. And I just feel like I haven't heard enough that it is either infeasible or not in the greater public interest, especially with all of the conversation right now around affordability and lack of affordable units. So that is where I am.
Okay, Rachel?
Yeah, echoing my colleagues, I think just additionally, you know, even if the words in perpetuity were not explicitly mentioned, the conversation revolved around these two units will be affordable. And there was apparently no discussion of any limited term, which I think naturally, you know, leads to the conclusion that it, there was no limitation in the term, and that's why the decision was issued in that way. And, you know, I appreciate that, you know, their options were to either, you know, appeal to the courts or come back to modify, such as they did here. But I think really the time to do that would have been around the time of the issuance of the decision, when they noticed that inconsistency between what they understood from the meeting and what the decision ultimately was issued as. And, you know, I think that's the best time to have the conversation rather than after construction has already commenced a year, a year and a half later. I think that just makes it much more difficult to make those determinations. But, you know, echoing Shannon, I don't think that, you know, we've been able to come up with this no longer, the longer term is infeasible or not in the public interest. I think that that really isn't something that I would be able to make a determination on here, and I think the decision should stand as it was drafted.
Thank you. Joy, do you have any comments on it?
I think I'm not voting on this matter, so.
Any comment? Okay, okay, Al?
Well, as you know, I held back my throat on it. In addressing the issues of the other members of the board, I came to a conclusion in my mind that it's a favorable situation that we've developed here, and I would vote to allow it. I was, there's other members and their feedback. And again, 30 years, it could be a whole different ballgame going on, what's going on in the markets. And this is a project that is good for the town. I don't question that. And I guess, I would be in favor of it.
Mr. Hearn, what is your wish?
I think I can count as well as the rest of us that there's maybe a three to two, but it's not the three to two I wanted. That the three of the members are leaning rather decisively to a no vote on the request. I would request a withdrawal. I always want to live to fight another day, but also, as I said, I think the relationship between my client and the family and the town over the years has been a good one, and we, I think, would all feel better if we not have a negative vote on record on a request for something like this. And maybe things will change down the road or not, but let's, we move to withdraw.
Do you want an opportunity to provide us with some fulfillment numbers? We got infeasible with eight units and two affordable.
Well, I mean, if you would entertain continuing it for a month to allow that, and then we see what, we give you something, we think some of it is the type of stuff that might be self-evident in terms of, there's no, you know, economies of scale. But if the, I'm willing to continue it for a month, whatever, what is the date in November?
Fourth.
Fourth?
I want to provide some.
See, I haven't agreed to.
The infeasible is, to me, it's just not apples and oranges. So to hold it to that standard is doing us all the time. Knowing what those numbers might look like, but if you could provide something that might help some of the other members?
Well, you know, it may or may not, I appreciate it. But the opportunity, we would take the opportunity. If a continuance might be helpful, then, sure. If you, if the board would entertain, I'd request a continuance instead of a withdrawal for now. If we can't convince you, or we feel we can't come up with numbers that would be helpful, then we'll request withdrawal. But if we, we welcome the opportunity, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, I'll leave it up to the board, so there's two options here. But given a continuance to provide us with some more information regarding the cost of the project, or just let them withdraw without prejudice. So I'll leave that up to the board.
I mean, I'm open to either pathway, but to be, like, very fair to the applicant, I think for me, the fact that the project is already pretty substantially underway and the amount of time that had passed between the decision being issued and it coming before the board, that for me would be like two pretty big hurdles to get over in terms of, like, proving that it is infeasible for the project to have it remain as the two units in perpetuity. But I think that if you would like to put together the information and it's helpful for others, like, by all means. But I would like to be fair with your time and the applicant's.
I appreciate that, the question, what do we mean by infeasible and all that?
Correct.
But in good faith, they started construction. They thought it was important to get started on a project that is important, we think, to the neighborhood and to the town. That provides benefits. Why delay it? Plus, you know, the longer you delay, you know, interest costs may be coming down, but everything seems to be costing more and more and more. And I hear that from developer clients all the time, so. But we'd be, we'd be willing to come back on the, on the 4th of November if the board is agreeable to that.
I mean, on that point, I think that the projections of what it's going to look like in 30 years, given all of those and many other unknown factors, I think will make that pro forma proposal very difficult to make a determination on November 4th, 2025. I mean, even if some iteration of this board in the future, within the next 30 years, were to look at this, I mean, it wouldn't be the first time that, you know, we've modified decisions from decades before, so I think.
Well, I'm just talking about the construction cost today.
Yeah.
Not, not looking down the road, just what it costs when you, when you have to build eight units and you have to build those two units at the same scale, same quality as the other six units, you can't cheap out on it. And, and so that gives you six, that gives you eight units, really, and you're getting the rent for six, and the construction numbers is what I'm referring to, not down the road.
Yeah, and what rents will be in the future, what it constitutes affordability, because that number is going to go up based on the surrounding AMI and the communities that we're related to, because 80% AMI is actually not cheap. So I think it would just be premature to.
Yeah.
I appreciate Ms. Churchill's comment that, and it ties into Screenwell's comment that we might come back a month from now with stuff, and we may say, no, it doesn't convince me, or we're not, we can't, you know, see very far into the future. But there might be some actual numbers that we can develop to show you what the difference is in terms of the rents collective, and carry those out percentage-wise over the number of years and what that cost is. We might be able to develop some of that, as well as some of the costs related to construction on a per-unit basis that might give you something to compare it with. And if we convince you, great, if we don't, not for lack of trying and not for lack of you folks giving us the opportunity. So if you don't mind, we'll come, we'd come back in a month if you'd agree to continue. And I don't mean, I'm not suggesting we're trying to waste your time, because we don't want to waste our own time either. But we would like, that, that's a point that, you know, again, I've given you the history of this, how it happened, and.
Matt, wait.
No, I just think it's good public policy, so I, I'm not gonna, you're not gonna change my mind with any numbers.
On the continuance, has any feeling, any either way from that?
I vote to have them withdraw without prejudice.
I would second.
Okay, motion's been made to withdraw without prejudice. It's been seconded by Rachel. On the motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
On the motion to withdraw without prejudice, Shannon?
Yes.
On the motion to draw without prejudice?
Yes.
On the motion to draw without prejudice?
No.
And I vote no. Figured too, the matter is removed without prejudice. Thank you.
All right, if it will not be continued, it will be off for a safer future.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we got on November 4th? Do we have a busy schedule? Do you want to do the?
We don't have a busy schedule, so, you know, we may want to continue the.
Yeah, so we had the, and everyone received it, so I've given opportunity to review it, and there was some more information in the email, thank you.
Can we just have, like, a two-minute overview to guide our ongoing considerations? So we have, like, more meaningful notes when we come back?
Yeah, okay, let's just do the minutes, and then we'll let you do a, what do they call that? The Cliff Notes version?
Sounds good.
So we have, we see the minutes from September 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes or to any changes to the minutes?
Since I wasn't here, I'll abstain.
Okay.
Motion to approve the September 2nd, 25 is presented.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt, so there's been a motion to approve the minutes, any discussion? Of September 2nd, 2025, Al, on the minutes approval?
Yes.
Rachel, on the minutes approval?
Yes.
Matt, on the minutes approval?
Yes.
Yes, and one abstain, were you here for that? Maybe you went?
Joanne, what's that?
Yeah, Joanne, a motion. Yes, and Joanne votes yes, the minutes are approved. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I can, why don't I do the Cliff Notes, and if you want to chime in, Shannon? Please do. So the comprehensive plan is entering Phase 3 of planning, having done existing conditions of what's happening in Norwood now, and a good amount of initial outreach with over 1,000 different pieces of input from residents that has resulted in the committee being able to put together essentially six themes for what we want Norwood to look like in 2035. And those are focused around things like housing, transportation, economic development, green space, and climate resiliency, and culture and history. And for each of those themes, we have strategies for how the town can get to where we want to be in 10 years. And the problem is, there's too many strategies. There's 179 right now, and we can't do that many things with our limited staff and limited, you know, tax dollars that are coming in. And so the goal is to have boards review strategies that are related to your jurisdiction and your expertise, and be able to weigh in about which ones are most important to you, which ones seem infeasible, or not, not as advantageous and should maybe be tweaked or cut. So that's, those are the packets that you all have. The ones that are, I tried to put the ones that I thought were most related to the ZBA first, and then the ones that are shaded at the end are kind of like, if we have time, they're related more to zoning policy in general. So that's what you have to look forward to. We also have a survey going on the comprehensive plan website, which is tinyurl.com/norwoodcp that is geared toward all residents, that is prioritizing the different goals within each of those big six themes that we have. So I encourage the board and anyone watching on NCM to check that out as well.
And this is on the website, right, if anyone watching can watch this?
Yeah.
I do have one thing I'm gonna, I was gonna talk to you guys about is similar to what we had this evening, that split zoning district. We should have language that says something like this. When a property is in a split zoning district, if the district that it's in is 50% more, the entire property will fall into that district. If it's 50/50 or less, it will fall to the less restrictive, less restrictive zoning. You could write it, you could write it like this, that if a district, if a property is in two districts, you could write it like, it will fall into the less restrictive district. you could write it like, it will fall into the less restrictive district. Or if you want to encourage that type of development, you could say it will defer to the least restrictive. There's two ways you can look at it, or you can try to split the baby if you will, but it certainly would eliminate what we had here and what we had on Dean Street a couple of weeks ago, and they ended up buying a parcel to get over that threshold. But we should have language because you're not going to be able to go out there and, and, and reset the zoning lines, so.
To line up.
To, to line up, it's just not going to happen, so we should have language. And, you know, we can discuss it, it's either less restrictive, goes to the less restrictive use or falls into the more restrictive use. And, and that would depend on, do we want less development or we want more development? So just, that's something I've been thinking about, uh, to put forth as a zoning amendment.
Oh, so interest, so regardless of whether, like regardless of the majority of like the square footage of the parcel falling into zone A or B, you're saying if there are two zones?
It could go to the less restrictive or it could go to the more restrictive.
Or maybe it goes into one or the other and then on special permit, the property owner could apply to have the other apply.
No, it would eliminate, it would eliminate it completely, because.
We cut and dry.
Yeah, just have to be cut and dry, because we'll have situations that we had on Dean Street and have here. I mean, in this case here, it should be less restrictive, because we don't want manufacturing out to the curb on Dean Street, right? So, so less restrictive is probably, uh, and it goes against, you know, how I feel about development, but, uh, in this case, I would not want to see open lot storage right out to Dean Street. So less restrictive might be the one we want to consider. When it falls into two, so two zoning districts, the less restrictive district will prevail.
That's what happened when they tried the first rezoning on Route One, several years ago.
Yeah.
With the trunk area A and the trunk area B. And that, instead of following a straight line through, it went property lines, but it was those that were in the majority space.
Right, yeah. So, so you, so like Boston has some of that. And Boston's a little different, because they have so many articles, so many neighborhoods. But one of them is in the Midtown Cultural District, if you're forty percent in this district, you can count, you can expand that out another forty percent, it's very confusing. You know, hey, we should be just cutting dry. If you, if your property falls in two zoning districts, the less restrictive zoning prevails, so they wouldn't even be able to come before us.
I guess less restrictive toward what goal would be something that I would be concerned about?
Less restricted, you, you fall into the less restrictive, or the more, oh, excuse me, I should be saying the more restrictive zone. The more restrictive zone, yeah, so in that case, though, you would go to the more restrictive zone. So in that case, in that manufacturing, you would be to the general, uh, general residents, and that's all you could do.
Like you just go up the table from the bottom being the least restrictive?
Right, yeah.
And the top being the most.
The most restrictive, the most restrictive zoning will, will prevail. Yeah, just something I think about there.
Yeah, we can add that as a, as a strategy.
Yep, adding a strategy, I think that's like the reverse of what I'm.
Maybe this will replace, maybe we'll find a strategy that this will replace.
No, I just think it, it clears up a lot of.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Communication, so. And, um, overlay districts, after overlay district, if they continue with the overlay district, there'll be no zoning portal appeals, only for the, only for the twenty-five percent thing. But, uh, but I find it's interesting to create a mixed zoning overlay district in South Norwood. When everything that comes up with South Norwood, everyone seems to be against it. An overlay district would be just like plan review, right?
Yeah, potentially. Or, so for the central business district, um, it's like the, the mixed-use central business district. And I, that's what that refers to is like having a mixed-use district in
Right.
Where the general business district is in South Norwood, which runs along Washington Street. So the goal would be basically, you know, first floor business and then apartments over.
Right, but my point is, if the overlay district goes in there, you, you don't want to have any say in how many units can go there, because it's just going to be site plan review.
Well, the, so, so for the central business mixed-use overlay district, um, the mixed-use is by special permit.
Right, okay, but isn't that, what are the ones that are site plan review? Some of our overlay districts are just site plan review, they, they, they're approved and you can only comment on what you want the site to look like.
Yeah, the, the M B T A overlays, those are site plan review only, because they, except for, um, we do, so the, the district that's next to Norwood Depot,
Yep.
which overlaps part of the central business district,
Right.
mixed-use is allowed there and that would be by special permit.
You know what just came across my desk? East Hoyle Street's for sale, five point five million, that got approved, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for sale now for five point five million.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
That's going to be twenty percent restricted in perpetuity.
Yeah, well, it's a big, it's a bigger one, it's, it's, it's just absorbing the cost, but we had that argument, so that's a mute point now. But no, thank you, and I know you guys put a lot of work into, I'll, um.
But that's the value, I think, of bringing some of the strategies to the boards, is that sometimes you can have something that at face value seems great for public policy, but then when you dig into it a little bit with people who have implemented things like that, you discover things that have unintended consequences, maybe when you were like at face value thinking of the strategy.
Right.
So we hate to, so public opinion and input is important and we're trying to couple that with like having some targeted ad reach as well to people who have like implemented these types of strategies as well.
And thank you for representing the Z B A and this, I know it's a lot of work, Shannon.
It's been great and it's been just another nice outlet to hear about, you know, values and things that people consider important in the town. So homework, more homework for next time.
Anybody else have anything to say? Our, our assistant community development director and a member representative for the board?
Yeah, I only had one comment was, I just skimmed through these and there are some things that, uh, when you look at areas that we want to create mixed-use development, in our particular town, there are also main thoroughfares. So you have to figure out a way that, how they work within our physical spaces.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Because you want pedestrian-friendly, but we have a main road going through, you know, three of the four areas we identified is that we want to be pedestrian-friendly, so I think there are lots of communities around that have committed solutions, both good and bad, and maybe we can learn from them.
Hey, and, um, I, just to mention to the board, I did get a letter from Sarin Alex regarding enterprise. Their attorney has asked the court to remand it back to the board, it hasn't been voted on yet. If you could send that email out to, was I the one that got that as the chairman?
You were, yeah.
Could you, could you send that out to everybody?
The five ninety-six Boston.
Five ninety-six.
Does the remand include instructions?
The judge has not remanded it.
Yeah, he, they requested it, yeah.
Has requested the remand, so.
Yeah.
My understanding is that our, our counsel is asking that it not be remanded, um, but it may be.
Yeah, yeah, but they're, they're usually, when those come back, they're usually ask some comments from the judge and, and then Dave will address this, I think, because the, they're claiming there's a significant change, because they got the right to clear that, uh, so. I just, you, we can send that out to everybody, yeah, so you have it, you guys can read it. All right, thought it was going to be an easier night, huh? How did the planning board meeting go last night?
I wasn't there for it, but they, everything that was on the agenda, um, passed with the conditions, so.
All right, all right, very good. Okay, anybody have anything else? Next meeting will be November fourth, Tuesday, at the Norwood Senior Center, two fifty-five Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. at seven P M. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by?
Second.
Rachel, Al on adjournment?
Okay.
Okay. Rachel?
Yes.
Yes. Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned, thank you, N C M, thank you, Alex, great job, again.